Meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Wednesday, July, June 4th, 2024, 2025. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. This is a public hearing in which any members of the public are welcome to attend. The meeting agenda is available on the Montclair website, as is a link to the township's YouTube channel where the hearing can be viewed live or after the fact. The hearing is also being televised on Channel 34. And we have one change to the agenda to announce tonight. Application 2929 for 110 Orange Road for the Montclair History Center has been carried to June 18th, 2025 without need for further public notice.
What was the date of that?
June 18th, 2025. I will call the roll. Chair Harrison.
Here.
Vice Chair McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Caulfield is not present. Uh, Mr. Church.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Simon is not present. Mr. Vera is not present, and Ms. Grant is not present. Mr. Griffith.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
We have the minutes of the May 21st meeting. I just have a couple of changes. On page two, line 33, you need to add me to the people who abstained. And then on page six, didn't we require them to go back to the Design Committee of the Historic Preservation Commission because the plans didn't show the railings and...
I thought that we had just asked them to show them on the final plans that they submitted.
Okay. But that, okay, okay. Any other changes to the minutes? That's one of them.
I, I have. So it has Mr. Caulfield and myself abstaining from all of the voting, which actually didn't happen, I don't recall. I can only speak for myself. I do li- I do want to remain abstaining from line 33 on that because I didn't hear the second presentation and the first presentation I heard I wasn't in favor of. So, line 32, I'm happy to say abstaining, but I believe that I voted in favor of the rest.
So I had you abstain from the vote because you weren't present when those hearings were heard at the last meeting?
Excellent, thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes? If not, someone want to move the minutes with that one change?
I'll move the minutes with that change.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Then we have the resolution for the Deano property on North Fullerton. Just have one change in number seven on page two, just so it makes sense. Put on the first line, the walkway that extends and insert the word "partially" along the addition. Any other changes to that resolution? If not, someone want to move the resolution with that change?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay, and then we have the resolution for the Metrigal property on Central Avenue. I don't have any changes. Does anyone else have any changes? If not, someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? First and only hearing this evening is for the Van Vliet and Gardens property at 21 Van Vliet Street. This is an application for a use variance to modify the condition of a prior approval dated October 20th, 1993 to permit a one-day exception for the property's use restrictions to allow a wedding ceremony to take place on October 4th, 2025 between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Is our, is the notice in order?
Yes, notice is in order and taxes are paid.
Just so the board knows, when the original application came to us in 1993 for the conversion of the property to the existing nonprofit use, a number of neighbors were here and expressed some concerns with the number of events that could occur because obviously the property is very attractive for events and that led to the condition restricting who could have events, which led first to the granddaughter and now the grand, great-grandson coming to us for deviation from the condition we imposed. Mr. Trevallack, will you give your appearance?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Alan Trevallack appearing on behalf of the applicant, Peter Van Vliet, hi.
...the president's agenda. On Monday, he attacked Republicans' signature tax and spending bill as a quote outrageous, pork-filled abomination. Plus, it was, until recently, largely loyal and enthusiastic about the president's agenda, but...
Sorry about that. First time that's happened. Usually pocket dialing one of my children. So, yeah, again, I'm appearing this evening on behalf of Peter Van Vliet, hi, who's sitting to my right. Peter's the great-grandson of Howard Van Vliet, who was, I guess, the third generation of the Van Vliet family who owned and lived on this special property at 21 Van Vliet Street, which we now refer to as the Van Vliet House and Gardens. I'm sure most, if not all of you, are familiar with this property, which consists of approximately six acres of land. As I indicated, three generations of the Van Vliet family lived on this property from approximately 1868 until 1992, when Howard Van Vliet passed away. Howard, I think, lived on the property for about 60 years and is the person who's most responsible for the gardens and the beauty of the property as we, as we know it today. Following Howard's death in 1992, about a year later, his heirs gifted this property to the Montclair Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, which has owned and managed the property for the last 33 years or so. I'm happy to say, actually, that I also serve as a trustee of the Montclair Foundation, and I've been doing that for the last five or six, six years. So, you know, given the, you know, the history of the property and the long-time connection between the Van Vliet family and the Montclair community, Peter would like to have his wedding ceremony on the property on October 4th, a Saturday in the fall. He'll describe the particulars in a few minutes, but we're talking about activity that would take place, most of the activity over a six-hour period on this Saturday in, in October. So as the chair pointed out, you know, we're here tonight because we're seeking relief from the conditions that were imposed by this board back in 1993, which essentially determined the permitted uses for this property, and wedding ceremonies are not included among those permitted uses. So that's what, you know, we're seeking tonight, a one-day exception for this event. So I have, Peter is going to testify, and then following his testimony, I plan to present some brief testimony from Mark Packer, who's the executive director of the Montclair Foundation. So, having said that, I'll call Peter Hi as my first witness.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Peter Van Vliet Hi, 43 Fourth Place, Brooklyn, New York.
All right, Mr. Trevallack, before, sorry, Zanep, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
Just state your name and position with the township.
Zanep Cosme, Assistant Planner.
Okay. Peter, you're the great-grandson of Howard Van Vliet, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, and you're engaged to be married?
I am.
And intending to be married in October this year?
I hope so.
All right, and we're here tonight because you'd like to have your wedding ceremony performed on the Van Vliet property, 21 Van Vliet Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
Before we talk about the details of, of that day, can you just explain to the board why you want, you'd like to get married on the property, why that's important to you?
Sure. Before I start, I just want to thank the board for their time, and it's very nice to have the chairman with such a, a long tenure on this board to understand the, the history of our family and, and this committee and, and this town. I tried to, so I came too emotional, but the, this property, this home, is incredibly important to my family. I think it is, it is very important that this board knows that we are not thinking about 21 Van Vliet Street as a venue. We are thinking about it as, as an ancestral home. The family that will be joining us hopefully on October 4th have called that property a home. In the case of my great uncle and for my mom and her cousins have also called it a home and a place where our family has gathered for major family milestones for over a century. What I'm asking this board to consider is to allow us to return to that space, observe one more milestone, the last one being my cousin Eliza, who will bring her husband and her three kids, and allow us that important continuation with the property and with the town. But importantly, in collaboration with the Montclair Foundation, that can you continue to observe the tranquility of the property and the surrounding area. We do not want to be disruptive. We are not looking to have a big party. We'll get into this a bit more, but of the 80 or so people we expect to be there, 50 of them we expect to be Van Vliet or Webb's. My grandmother, Anne Van Vliet, married Roger Van Vliet, also of Montclair, New Jersey, formerly of 167 Upper Mountain Ave. This is a homecoming, and with your permission, we would like to observe my marriage to my partner Lisa on October 4th.
Okay, great. So let's talk about the specifics in terms of what your plans are for that day, you know, provided this board approves this application. So, we're talking about Saturday, October 4th, correct?
Yep.
Can you just kind of walk through a general timeline? First of all, when would the wedding ceremony itself take place?
Sure, we expect it to take place hopefully around noon. It'll be about a 45-minute ceremony, mostly family members writing, reading short pieces or poems, and, and enjoying the garden in the moment together.
And where exactly on the property would the wedding take place?
We expect it to happen at the back of the house. A, a collection of chairs facing the house, my partner and I, and hopefully a friend marrying us will be on the back patio.
Okay. And how many people do you expect to attend the event?
Yeah, no, yeah, of course. We haven't sent out invitations, so no RSVPs, but we're hoping to get 80.
Okay. You think it'll be, 80 would be the maximum?
Yeah, that would be a lot of yeses.
Okay. And when do you expect that people would begin arriving at the property?
Around 11:00 a.m.
Okay. Do you intend to have immediate family members gather a little bit earlier on the day?
If, if possible, around eight.
Okay, all right. And what equipment, if any, would, would be set up for purposes of this ceremony?
A sunny day would be about 80 chairs and 10 tables. If we have to put up a tent in the event of rain, it would also include that. And then likely two 10-foot buffet tables for a garden-style lunch that we would have after the ceremony.
Okay, all right. So, and when would that equipment be delivered to the property?
We're hoping to have everything set up before 11:00 a.m., and we, again, respecting the neighborhood and surrounding area, we'd probably ask the rental company come around nine.
Okay. And they would set up the tent? If you need a tent, set up the tables and chairs and then leave the property, then come back after the event to take it all away?
Around 4:00 p.m. We, we hope to have everyone and everything off by 5:00 p.m.
Okay. So you expect that guests attending the wedding would start to arrive around 11?
That's right.
Okay. And then what are the, what are your plans for after the wedding vows have been exchanged?
Sure. I, really, the, this is not a structured day. We're not, it's not a party. It's, it's really an opportunity for our family to be on this important, in this important space together. So it, it is very loosely structured. We're going to set up food and, and really the, the remaining hours between the ceremony and 4:00 p.m. will be for our family and my partner's family to be on the property together.
Okay, and will there be a caterer serving the food?
Yep.
Will the food be prepared onsite or offsite?
No, offsite.
And what kind of food do you expect to serve?
Uh, yep, buffet style with one or two attendants.
Okay, okay. All right, and will there be any music during the day?
Yeah, like a lot of my answers, nothing's booked, but no amplified music. It'd be nice if, I think my mom and I have talked about having two or three string musicians on the property.
Okay, but no, nothing amplified?
Certainly not.
Okay, just soft acoustic music is what you have in mind?
And no dancing.
Okay, okay. And how many people do you expect to be working at the event for the catering company that's supplying the food service?
Two or three, maybe, with one or two more during initial setup and breakdown.
Okay, and what other people would attend the event other than the guests?
Sure.
People working at the wedding?
Yep, in addition to the caterer, one photographer, we're going to have a florist who may have a helper. They'll only be there half the day. And then the setup crew for the chairs, tables, and potentially the tent, who will be there just in the morning, and then at the end of the day to do a breakdown.
Yeah. Will there be any alcoholic beverages served?
Uh, we would like to serve beer and wine.
Okay. No other alcohol other than beer and wine?
No.
Okay. And we talked about this earlier, if there's permitting required in order to do that, you'll apply for whatever permits are required for this one-day event through the clerk's office?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. All right, and then when do you expect that, you know, the luncheon will be over and people will be leaving the property?
Four. We hope to have the guests off the property by four.
Okay, so you figure out everybody will be gone by four o'clock except for the equipment company?
Will hopefully show up then, do a breakdown, everything off by five.
Okay, all right. And going to discuss this probably a little bit more further with Mr. Packer, but where do you, where do you intend for people to, for your guests to park when they're coming to the wedding on this day?
The back parking lot, which I believe has around 40 spots. Mark would know much better than I, and I, I think the Montclair Foundation has generously offered to have a groundskeeper there to help direct parking.
Okay. So you expect that parking will be on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's actually two parking lots on the property, one in the front of 11 Van Vliet Street and then one in the, in the rear of the property.
That's right, yeah.
And that's where you expect guests, and your guests will be directed to parking lots, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
You intend to send specific directions out with your invitations, advising people where they should park when they're coming to the wedding?
That's right, and, and thankfully about half the guests will be very familiar with the, with the property, so.
You expect most of the guests will be, you know, family members?
Uh, almost exclusively of the 80, yeah. My partner has been somewhat jokingly calling this a family reunion because about 60 of those people will be my family, my direct family members.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay. All right, that's all I have. Is there anything else that you wanted to say?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Two quick things. The first is just to give this board a, a sense of how we are thinking about this day. It is really to bring our family back to a place that, that holds such importance to us. Again, it is not to have a party, but it is to congregate in community and, and celebration. Hopefully, it's obvious that the, the spirit in which the property was given to the town is reflected in how we are thinking about this day, which it is, it is in appreciation for Montclair. It is in recognition of our family. And then I, I, I just want to take this quick moment to, uh, thank and, and recognize the stewardship of the property by the Montclair Foundation and how appreciative our family is by how the Montclair community has embraced the property and how it uses the property. I have run into so many people across ages, but especially around my age, who have been at the property for prom photos or have admired the incredible landscape, architecture, or have just found a shaded place to read. And we will be, our family is so aware of, of how the property is being used and is so appreciative of how it's being used. I just want to thank, again, the Montclair Foundation and the, and the greater Montclair Community for its admirable stewardship.
All right, no further questions.
Mr. Collett, do you have any questions?
Well, congratulations to you and to your partner.
Thanks, John.
I have no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Church?
I have no questions.
Ms. Harris?
Uh, no question.
Mr. Cruz?
No questions, congratulations.
Mr. Moore?
Congratulations in advance, and I have no questions.
Mr. Griffith?
Congratulations, no questions. Thank you.
I, I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
No. Let's make congratulations last if he gives the correct answers. Will, for the ceremony itself, will there be a microphone?
We don't expect there to be.
And the tent, will that be big enough to cover both the participants and the ceremony and the guests, or, I don't know how you plan to do that?
In the event we need a tent, I, what I imagine we'll do is we'll set up chairs under the tent, have the ceremony under the tent, move the tables in.
Okay. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Question. So I see on the plan that some gates will be removed? Is that a part of the plan?
No, that's, that's, that was just the plan, that when they were last before us for the changes to the parking.
I think in 2011.
It's nothing to do with, and that's just to give us a context of property.
We wanted to give you a, a site plan, and that's the most recent approved site plan, as chairman said, going back to 2011, but, you know.
Okay.
We're not proposing any changes to the, to the site whatsoever, you know, as part of this application.
Just, it's, just, this is more a statement than just knowing realities of things. I suspect, you know, the notice said from 11:00 to 5:00. I think based on your testimony, clearly the people arriving to set up are there before 11:00 and I'm nervous on the back end of...
Sure, yep.
Getting it cleared out and don't want you to get in trouble, so we're probably going to expand those hours to make clear. No one raises any issues. Okay. Are there any members of the public who have questions for this witness?
No questions for this witness. We'll have some comment.
Okay, Mark, well, your next witness.
Sure, Mark Packer. You can...
Thank you.
Mr. Packer, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Mark Packer, 644 Fairfield Way, Union, New Jersey.
Mark, you're employed by the Montclair Foundation?
I am.
Okay, in what capacity?
I'm the executive director.
And how long have you served as executive director?
Four years, seven months, approximately.
Okay. I was going to ask you to provide a short history of the property, but I don't think that's really necessary. I provided it in my opening unless you wanted to correct anything I said in my opening remarks.
That's pretty good, Alan.
Okay. Just briefly, you know, explain, you know, how the property is currently utilized today, for what purposes?
Well, I mean, it's primarily a resource for the residents of Montclair. It's a, an oasis in the middle of an exurban environment where people can visit and just have a refuge from the craziness of the work world and enjoy the beauty and serenity of the space. We don't charge any admission, and so it's a resource for everybody regardless of their economic circumstances or backgrounds, and it's truly kind of a, I feel like a, a melting pot in a way, of people who visit and see it as a resource. We offer educational programming in horticulture and the environment. We offer cultural programming, concerts. We make the house and gardens accessible to nonprofit organizations to have meetings and retreats and celebratory events.
Okay, great. And the gardens are open to the public?
Yes.
And 365 days of the year, is that correct?
Well, it'll be 364 of Van Vliet wedding habits.
Okay, so are you saying that if, if the wedding takes place with this board's approval tonight, that the gardens will be closed to the public that day?
Yes.
Okay. And needless to say, this event has been approved by the Montclair Foundation, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Hardly endorsing it.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about parking and how that, you expect that would be handled? You've discussed this with Peter, correct?
Yes.
And concerns about trying to keep cars off the street as much as possible in terms of parking?
Right, I mean, we have at least 40 parking spaces, both, you know, in aggregate between the Van Vliet lot, which is the 21 Van Vliet Street entrance, and the North Mountain Avenue lot. And so if the, if Peter's group doesn't greatly exceed 80 people, we should be able to accommodate almost all of them in the two lots with a little bit of overflow. And our intention is to have a caretaker, which is a staff person assigned to Peter's group, to ensure that the parking occurs seamlessly and that we address any overflow by sending people either up to Upper Mountain Avenue or to North Mountain to park if there is a need for additional parking.
Or to direct people to where the parking lots are on the property?
Yes, yeah.
So you envision that the caretaker would be, you know, stationed in the front of the, of the house on Van Vliet Street?
Yes.
So that as people are arriving, he can assist them in directing those people to one of the two lots on the property?
Yes.
Okay. And is it the intention that to, to prevent, even though it's public parking on Van Vliet Street, but to prevent... Street, but to prevent guests from parking on Van Vleek Street?
Yes, we want to avoid that.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have for Mr. Packer.
Other questions from members of the board? Ms. Harris?
Yes. You mentioned you have other events on the property. What's the average size of those events?
They range, I mean, we, some of our educational classes are just, you know, a few families. When we have other celebratory events, they could be forty people, fifty people, eighty people.
Okay. And then do you often end up with overflow parking on the street?
Typically, when we schedule larger events, we try and do two things. One, we schedule an off-duty police officer to be on the road to handle traffic flow, and we also arrange with the police department to place no parking signs on one side of Van Vleek Street so the street doesn't become congested.
And then you also mentioned that you sometimes have concerts on site?
Yes.
Do you have amplified music during those events?
Typically not. Most of those concerts are held indoors. We have a free Mother's Day concert. It's an annual event that we have in our formal garden. There's no charge for it, and it's done in partnership with the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra. So they bring an ensemble and people will bring lawn chairs and blankets that sit out on the lawn, and that's really the only outdoor concert that we're doing currently.
And do you ever get any complaints from neighboring neighbors about the noise or?
About the noise? No.
During the concerts?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
I just had one question. As the executive for the foundation, what would be your opinion as to the significance of this event?
It's enormously significant to us because the Van Vleek family did something unprecedented in their generosity and philanthropy in donating this property to the Montclair Foundation. And to us, it seems like such a small thing for us to be able to return the favor in a way and provide this opportunity for them to return and to celebrate this monumental occasion for their family.
Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
Since this will be the one day that the gardens will be closed, how will the public be informed?
So we do that through social media. We will put something on our website. We'll also be doing social media posts far in advance to communicate that, and then we'll also have signage on the property indicating that the property is closed.
Other questions?
I guess, well, you indicated that for some events you have the police put no parking on one side of Van Vleek. Are you planning to do that for this?
Not clear that it's really warranted in this case because it's not really that large, and if the property is closed to the public, there shouldn't be any vehicles in either lot. So we feel that we should be able to accommodate all or the vast majority of vehicles that will be coming for the event.
So I assume, you said the employee will be at the front of the house, and so that when that parking lot is full, he'll be able to direct people to make the right on North Mountain to go to that parking lot, and then the logical place for that lot gets filled is they'll park on North Mountain and
That's correct, sir.
Well, you know, which my observation is that's a fairly frequent occurrence when the property is busy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the public who have questions? And if not, are there any members?
No, nothing further.
Any members of the public who have any comments on the application? We'll get you a microphone.
Step away.
And would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Thank you. I am, I'm an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of my clients, Michael and Jessica Freeman, and I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Could you just identify yourself, please?
Yes, I will. Mark Clement. Firm is Clement Muller, and we're in the Morris Town area. I'll try to be fairly brief. As I said, I represent Michael and Jessica Freeman, and they're neighbors on Van Vleek Street. Which is, and the Van Vleek House, as you know, obviously from the comments of Mr. Tremulak and your own personal knowledge that the Montclair Foundation manages and operates the Van Vleek House. I think that understanding that this is a residential area provides a better perspective as to why we're here tonight to respectfully object to the application. Now, we're aware that this is an application by the great-grandson of the benefactor and prior owner of the property, and the objection to the application is not a personal matter. In fact, we wish the couple well, congratulate him and all, but they're requesting the approval of a waiver of certain restrictions that would allow them to conduct a wedding on October fourth of 2025 for a ceremony and a luncheon that would go a very good portion of the day, obviously, from the activity that starts at about eight until they intend to clear the property at about five o'clock. The notice that I got only a couple of days ago indicated that there would be a request for a wedding. It did not indicate the size of it, so tonight, we hear for the first time that it's eighty people. That's a, that's not a huge wedding, but it's a fairly sizable wedding, and we can expect traffic. And this is one of the issues that I'm going to discuss very briefly, but the problem is that this event is not permitted according to the restrictions in the resolution. Now, in fact, the resolution of October twentieth of 1993 specifically was cited in the notice of tonight's hearing, and that restriction is a use restriction, as you're all aware. According to the terminology of the resolution, it limits the use of the facility and the property to non-private organizations, and this would be a private wedding, obviously. Events, it says, "Events not associated with nonprofit events are prohibited." Okay, that's pretty clear. It couldn't be any clearer, not just in the language, but in the spirit of what's not to be allowed on this property. Incidentally, there were two subsequent resolutions regarding this property. I'm sure you're aware of them. They were both in 1994 and 2011. Neither of them changed the restrictions that were placed in the 1993 resolution. The point is, is that this restricted event is somewhat emblematic of exactly how the Montclair Foundation has ignored the restrictions over the years, and this has been very much to the detriment of the neighborhood. Now, without getting too deep into the details, there is litigation pending in the Superior Court Law Division, Essex County, by the Freemans that focuses on the resolution and the restrictions in those resolutions and essentially the failure by Montclair to enforce those restrictions. It's in the form of an action in lieu of prerogative writ. The Montclair Foundation has largely ignored the restrictions over the years, and each year it seems to be getting a little bit worse. There are photo shoots, yoga classes, birthday parties, party buses, improper signage, parking, and traffic issues that have impacted on this residential neighborhood, and that's the problem. In short, the Montclair Foundation has been commercializing the property more and more over the years, and if this permit is granted, it probably won't be the last request of this nature. And that's part of the problem. In fact, it's somewhat ironic that the application is made while recognizing the restrictions in the resolution. Apparently, some people do know that there are restrictions, even though they're more ignored than they are adhered to, perhaps under the old adage that forgiveness is probably easier to get than permission. At the very heart of it, however, the enforcement has been virtually nonexistent, the actions or perhaps the inactions of the code enforcement and perhaps ultimately this body, that the Montclair Foundation has had a fairly free rein in ignoring the restrictions and running these commercial applications. For example, you know, the excuses that we've heard so far is that, well, code enforcement can't be there usually on weekends when a lot of these events take place, noise, traffic, whatever. People walking up on the neighbor's lawns because they're having a photo shoot is expanding and flowing over onto the neighbor's property, and the most impacted neighbor are my clients who are right across the street. They perhaps circumvent some of these restrictions by offering sponsorships. They do their own photo shoot, applications and permits and whatever, which seems also to be in contravention of one of your local ordinances, one for Chefte, one forty. But at any rate, the bottom line is, is that we've got two issues. One is that there are already problems in the neighborhood with regard to the quality of life caused by the lack of oversight of the running of the property, and the second is that this is not the precedent that we want to set with regard to this permit. As I said, it's not a personal attack on this young man. We wish him the best, but this is not the type of permit or application that should be approved by this board, so we respectfully reject and object to the application. Thank you.
Do you want to have the Freemans testify or just rely on your statement?
If that's necessary, I think they'll stand by my statement.
We're happy to answer any questions you have.
Yes, if you have any questions, as I said, they can tell you about the problems in the neighborhood and the quality of life. I don't know if you want to go down because that's perhaps off on a bit of a tangent, but it's information that is in the context of the pending litigation.
Do members of the board have questions with the neighbors?
Sorry, I just wanted a quick clarification. You were saying that there is an issue with the quality of life in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Tremulak, do you have anything further?
Well, let me just respond briefly to Mr. Clement's comments. You know, obviously, we all know that this, what we're proposing is not permitted under the 1993 resolution, which is why we're here tonight seeking relief. The relief we're seeking is for one event on one day over a span of six or seven hours for a member of this family that gave this wonderful asset to this community that we all get to enjoy in one way or another. That's all we're seeking tonight, as the board understands. Now, I'm aware, because the Freemans, and only the Freemans, to my knowledge, have been expressing a number of complaints over a number of years suggesting that the Montclair Foundation has not honored the use restrictions in the board's resolution. We deny that that's the case. We disputed it. I addressed these issues with Janice Tally. I've dealt with Mr. Clement. I'm aware of the lawsuit that's been filed. The lawsuit was filed against the town and only the town, claiming that the town hasn't enforced the restrictions. We had some meetings to try to address some issues. I thought we made some progress. This was with the assistance of Mr. Burr. But the point is, you know, this is not the forum, and this is not the body to which enforcement issues, you know, are to be addressed. There is a forum to do that. He's filed a lawsuit. Again, complaints have been made to the town. We have responded to them. I suggest that, again, there are ways to deal with those issues, but this is not the time or the place for that, and we're seeking very limited relief for very special circumstances, again, for the Van Vleek family who gave this wonderful asset to the town. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Church?
One time before, an application like this came from a member of the Van Vleek family for a wedding, and that was approved by this board. I was, I believe, on the board at the time. And we did put some restrictions on it, and those restrictions were discussed tonight about music, about crowd, about length of time, about deference to the community, so that, and this is the first I've heard since recently that there has been problems with the use of the property. It's used extensively, I understand, at Christmas time. It's in the springtime when they have their spring sale. Those events are heavily utilized, so I don't think it's out of line for this board to sit here and try to make an exception for an event for a member of the family, of the Van Vleek family, because the first time we gave that exception, it was for a member of the Van Vleek family. It wasn't for just anybody in Montclair who wanted to have a wedding there or was going to have a party and wanted to use the property. It was always in deference to the Van Vleek family. So I think that the board is sitting on a situation where they have to make a decision, we have to make a decision, if this is the same as the previous exception we made for the same kind of event with the restrictions that we put on that event or not.
Start discussion, Mr. McCullough. Was anybody else around when that? I think, is the public hearing closed?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Jay, I assume that was?
Yeah, that was me.
Ms. Harris?
I mean, I understand that the neighbors have some issues with the property outside of this particular application, and I, you know, hope that you find a resolution. I think this is, you know, a once-in-a-thirty-year request from the family that owned the property historically, and it's a very limited timeframe as opposed to some other events that I know occur on the property, so I think it's fair. There is a precedent to grant this one-day variance, and I think it's fair to do that, and, you know, I hope that there's some resolution with the other issues that you're having on this property with other events in the future.
Mr. Cruz?
I've actually been to the Van Vleek House, I think, once in my time here in Montclair. I was working at the Terra Cafe, and some of my friends wanted to host a music event there, and the space was extremely accommodating. As someone who also grew up with a certain level of privilege, I got to use that privilege a couple of weeks ago to go visit Peru, and when we were hiking on Rainbow Mountain, I got to see a ten-year-old Andean child pedaling little trinkets for about thirty cents a pop. So when I hear quality of life, like after the trip I just went through through Peru, you know, I think the Van Vleeks have done a great service to this town generationally, and you're in love, you want to get married, you know what the restrictions and rules are, and, you know, as long as you follow those, it's good.
Mr. Moore?
I think that this is a particular case.
I think that this is a particular case, given that the Van Vlech family has given such a gift to the town. I also think that it's very important as well to take into consideration the neighbors' concerns and issues, and maybe that's something to look at down the line beyond this. But I recognize milestones and ancestral homes, and, you know, this past weekend, I just celebrated my great aunt's one-hundredth birthday, and so it was very significant, and there was a lot of history. And so I'm also a neighbor of the Van Vlech property right on Upper Mountain, so I pass it daily, and I see the traffic. I also think that this would be a very, you know, rare occurrence in terms of having a wedding and how special that is. So to my colleague's point, I do think that it would be important for there to be, you know, have some type of a middle ground. But from what I've heard, I think that it would be a wonderful event, and it's a special situation, and that's how I would be looking at it.
Mr. Griffith?
So I'm trying to connect the dots on nonprofit, and I guess I'm a pretty simple thinker. The family seems to have been a nonprofit organization donating the property to the city. The event is not a profit-motivated event, and the event is contained within the property judged by the number of people that are coming and the number of parking spaces that are available. So I don't see it as an imposition on the neighbors. I see it as a connection of more nonprofit enterprises working together.
I'm in favor of the application, but I, you know, I think, and I'm actually very encouraged by Mr. Clement's comments that where he's not raising concerns with the conditions we imposed back in 1993, but his clients have a concern with whether those have been adhered to. And I voice no opinion on that. No one has, prior to tonight, has raised that with us, is this board does not have direct enforcement capabilities. It is somewhat to our aggravation at times, and, you know, we can bring things, if things are brought to our attention, we can bring them to attention to the township to take action. I, you know, you've obviously brought a lawsuit, no views on that. I think one of the things, when the granddaughter's application came two years after we granted the original variance, the thought that ran through my head at that time was, gee, maybe we should do something for the family so we're not dealing with these. And then my thought at the time, and I had the same thought when we got this application, so how do we word that? And, you know, and, you know, over time, the Van Vlech family is going to grow and grow and grow, and, you know, and the original intention when we granted the original approval was to limit events, to minimize. We tried to strike a balance with the concerns the then neighbors raised and the, you know, the desires of the foundation to operate the facility in a manner that would meet its objectives. And I think, you know, we did that. I think in terms of this, you know, events are allowed now until midnight on Friday and Saturday, they're ending at five, though I'm going to modify that slightly. I think, you know, this is far less than what could occur under the conditions for a nonprofit event that's allowed by the resolution. You know, I think, and, you know, as my colleagues have indicated, this was a tremendous gift of the family to the township that, you know, has been a benefit to the township, you know, for the past thirty-plus years and, you know, will continue to be. It's just a marvelous property. And, you know, I think, you know, modifying our condition, you know, very sporadically, you know, at this point, you know, once every thirty years. I don't mean the next family member has to wait another thirty years. But I don't think that a sporadic Van Vlech family member getting married on the property is going to cause any problems for the neighborhood. I think that this is an appropriate one-time modification to allow Peter to get married on the property. I think the conditions, what I like to do, and I'll rely on someone on the applicant's side if this, doing this causing a headache, is that setup start no later than nine, no earlier than nine AM, that the event be limited between eleven AM and five PM, and the breakdown go no later than six PM. That there be no amplification, and there be no more than a hundred people counting guests, caterers, the people setting up and setting down the facility, and that there be an employee of the foundation present to direct traffic. You know, I guess, I would say, starting at ten-thirty and continuing until five-thirty to make sure all the cars leave the property appropriately. Any other discussion from members of the board? He was nodding.
Affirmatively.
Okay.
If not, someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve, stated by the, taking into, stated by the chair, taking into consideration the restrictions he just mentioned.
Is there a second? Second. A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. On behalf of the family and the foundation, thank you very much. And I hope the foundation and the neighbors will talk to each other. We've been talking. Unless, we put the executive session in case we got a response from the Department of Education, and unless anyone wants to discuss the letter Mike sent to the Department of Education, we don't need to have a closed session. We did not get a response. I'll let you know what we did. So if there's no questions, we should get a motion to adjourn. So more? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. See you in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yep. I'll be outside.
Mark, very nice to meet you.
Just a reminder, our July meeting has been rescheduled from the sixteenth to July twenty-third.